Good evening. Welcome to the November 1st Community of the Whole meeting for our, hopefully, our last budget meeting before we will vote on this to be permanent. And with that, I need the approval of the October 18th and 25th Community of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. And we will move on to the review and schedule of the department fund operating budgets. We will start with recreation.
Okay. We're in the home stretch here. So tonight we'll go recreation, library, some RDA information, and mayor's budgets, and then we'll wrap up with just some summary information. Dan Glenn just stepped up to the podium. We'll go through recreation and youth center with him. Same kind of format as the last couple of meetings. I'll kind of touch on the big changes, and then if you have any specific questions for either myself or Dan, we can go that route then. So again, these go in alphabetical order, so if I'm pointing something out, you can just follow the line items by alphabetical order. So recreation overall, we're seeing a $12,000 decrease in their operating budget from 2018, or about 4%. If we start going down the line items here, the first big change that pops out here is the health insurance number, it's decreasing by about $9,600. Again, this has to do with the tiers that are going to be implemented in 2019. And when I say 100% of the recreation employees, all two of them have single plans, so we're seeing a decrease in their health insurance costs for next year. The next line item that jumps out is the outside services contracts. That's the $44,000 number. You see that's dropping by about $4,600, $4,700, or about 10%. That's just to put it more in line in what we've, with what we've been running historically. I looked today, year-to-date, we're right around $33,000, so $44,000 looks like a sufficient number for that budget line item. The next line item that jumps out, of course, is salaries. So we see a slight decrease there of about $5,600. That's because the 2018 budget was determined using Tom's salary. So that's the reason for the decrease there. And then we see the seasonal temporary help jumping up about $6,200, and that's because we had to add a position to run the summer day camp. So any questions for Dan on the recreation budget?
Okay. Yeah. Dan, for Parks and Rec, how many employees do you have?
We have three full-time employees, the youth center manager, myself, and recreation supervisor.
Okay. And according to national standards for our community size, how many positions should we have to help run Parks and Rec?
Well, the median has, we're at, well, it's a wrong, we have, with Parks Maintenance included into the, I just did a Parks ma, or it's called Parks Metrics, and it's what the NRPA is trying to push, so you can sort of like benchmark your operation compared to other comparable communities. With Parks Maintenance included into our operation, we're at like 6.3 FTEs per 10,000 residents, and the median is right around like 10 and a half FTEs for, that's for our region and our community size.
So we're about four employees short of what would be considered kind of the median, not even the average, but the median. Okay. Thank you.
That may not be very true, because he's not counting the employees that work out of the public works that work in, on park maintenance.
Aren't you counting the park maintenance?
I'm counting, yeah, the Parks Maintenance Supervisor, then all of their seasonal staff, but they're also public work, full-time employees who once in a while do help out with park maintenance-type projects.
All right. Sid?
Just online on my, I have a travel conference. It says 708%.
Yeah. So previously, Tom just budgeted for Wisconsin Park and Rec Association memberships. The past few years, I was actually getting paid to do, go to these different conferences and give presentations, so it was taken out of the budget because it's sort of redundant. I didn't really need to pay to go to a conference when they were paying me to actually do it. So this includes just basically travel, lodging, and state conference registration fees. And it's sort of like an industry standard.
I mean, it's not a terrible amount of money, but you know, that percentage increases a lot, so.
Yeah, that's just because Tom budgeted not a lot of money, so. What's budgeted is basically what every other community does for their professionals.
Okay. I'd just point out that the variance, well, it's $2,124, so.
Regina?
Just to go back on to what Denise brought up, I mean, with our two, or three full-time staff, and then you get Pat Groom as a full-time staff, and you have a number of seasonal employees and other things under Pat, I mean, I guess to actually fully do this, I think, I mean, tonight's not the night to actually look at it, but to say that we're four behind other communities, I don't know if that's actually true. I mean, maybe one or two, but I don't know if we're actually four, because, but you know, did you count in all the people that work at public works? And I mean, you also have a seasonal employee in the summer as well, so.
That position, that position was included. The only position that weren't included were like the public works, full-time employees who, once in a while, do a little bit of park maintenance project work.
Okay.
But it's hard to quantify that. I don't, I'd rather be able to answer that better than I would, but yeah.
Ideally, we would be better off if we had one or two other employees on the Park and Recs team, both of the maintenance and recreation side.
Okay. Cap?
No, it was asked and answered. Thank you, sir.
Tim?
I believe you put in a staffing request, didn't you?
Yeah, I did, and it was just to extend the hours of the summer seasonal staff to readjust that position to make it so it was a 20-hour position year-round, and it's to do a lot of administrative work.
So I think, you know, Dan recognizes there are some needs. We've made a commitment, you know, to talk more about the rightsizing and additional staffing, but this is certainly an area now with, you know, Park and Rec, but many of the other departments were kind of in the same position where we did have a number of staffing requests.
Can I just respond to that? It's just, with these budgets, and I hope next year, that the actual what was asked for is actually presented, because on, what is presented on recreation does not reflect that Dan had requested extra employees, nor does any of the other ones that we have seen. And so for us to get a true look of what the city's true needs are, not that we can afford it, but at least the community then knows that we're running very lean and our staff are stretched, and I would just like that reflected in future budgets.
And that's going to be presented at the November 13th presentation. I think one thing that's not being taken into consideration, maybe Dan wasn't aware either, on the maintenance side of things, we did increase the number of the seasonal staffs up to 1099. I can't remember exactly where they were in terms of hours, but we budgeted them just under that WRS limit, so there was a fair increase in terms of hours too on that maintenance side.
Thank you.
If you have any specific questions, I have Brett's breakout here in terms of how we're breaking out employees too.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim?
Thank you. The three full-time staff members, how are their incomes or salaries reflected in the breakdown here? Maybe that's more for you, Jamin. I see three different areas. I'm just curious, salaries?
Yep.
That can't be the three, I hope, right?
No, so, well, the salary would be Dan, and then a portion of his goes to the youth center as well.
Okay.
And then we have Courtney, who would be included in this one.
Right.
I don't.
And we have two other wage.
I don't think any of hers gets allocated to youth center. So the wage line item here is Courtney, and then the third employee would be on the youth center budget, which will be the next one we go through.
Okay. Thank you. I was, I'll be honest, I was concerned to think that we were paying three full-time people on less than $60,000, so I knew that wasn't the case, but I wanted to know where it was coming from. Thank you.
Cass?
This question is for Dan, and I'm unaware of this in the history of, in 2015, we had a pool sinking fund, and then we haven't done anything, and then again, it's $4,000. Can you enlighten us on what's going on with the pool?
It's a shift in the budget, so if you see the pool sinking fund, you see the $4,000, and then if you go down a couple lines to that transfer to other fund, you see a negative $4,000.
And that fund is really.
Oh, it's not the actually swimming pool.
We, I.
I'm thinking it's a swimming pool.
No, it's a sinking fund for maintenance at the pool, I believe.
Yeah, it's for, so we have the inflatable equipment at Troll Beach.
Okay.
And this allows us to purchase one F1, you know, terrors or something, so we don't have to wait for the season to go through and, like I said, in the next budget cycle or something.
Yeah. And I didn't like the way it was budgeted, because it says transfer to another fund, but we don't actually have a pool fund. What this does is we actually set it aside as restricted amounts within our fund balance, so this will allow us to do that, so I don't lose track of it. So it's more of a sinking fund, not an actual fund of the city. So just the way it was budgeted was kind of misleading, and I think we're losing sight of it. So this way, I'll at least see this and move it into a restricted component of the fund balance.
So we have no pool that's sinking?
Correct.
Okay. All right. But if the inflatables start to sink, we have a pool fund to inflate them again.
Denise?
Yeah. Jamin gave us kind of a detail of what was requested, and neither of the requested positions in recreation were budgeted. One was the administrative assistant, and another was an increase in seasonal administration position. And it says here that neither of those were budgeted.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Pool's okay.
If not, thank you, Dan.
Actually, Dan has one more here.
Youth Center.
Should be a quick one. So here's the youth center. Nothing too significant here. You can see health insurance going up by about 7%. Again, that's because the youth center director has the family insurance plan. And then the next change would be the salaries. Again, we can see a decrease of $3,600, but again, the way it was budgeted last year took into consideration Tom Lynch's old salary. So not too much going on here for youth center. Any questions on this one?
Yes.
The youth center director is paid through a different system than, and would be kind of considered recreation, because some of the youth center employees are recreation. So this is a totally separate category of payment then, right?
It's a separate department within the city, yeah.
So why are some of the recreation employees listed under youth center and some aren't?
I believe it's, the only person listed is the youth center director.
And then he has two assistants as well.
He has two assistants, yeah.
What's that?
He has two assistants as well, that are, they're 15-hour-a-week positions. So there's two youth center assistants that are 15-hour-a-week positions.
Okay. Yeah. My point is that, I mean, if you look at his, he's considered recreation as well, but in a different category at the youth center. I mean, the youth center director would be considered to be a recreation position in the city.
It would.
Because that's what he does. I mean, he does a recreation program for the youth center.
Are you getting to Dan's number of positions?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he counted him. He counted that position.
Yeah, that was part of the total.
Yep.
Okay.
So the youth center director is under, is under wages and not salaries?
Correct.
Even though he's a director, he, but he's hourly wage?
But he's not in a leadership position.
Okay. So only leadership goes under salaries. Okay.
Does he get a grant to cover his wages? Is that reflected in?
Yeah, the Friends of the Youth Center receives a grant, or has been receiving a grant from the Bryant Foundation, and then they pay the city. The city invoices the Friends of the Youth Center, so his position's covered by the grant.
So this will actually be zero for that in the end, or?
No, because the way the city budgets, the revenues are all up just in a lump category. I mean, they're broken out line by line, but they're basically, in our system, it comes out as the memory department. So you have all your revenues up here, and then the departments are really just expenditures, so you don't see any actual revenues within the individual departments themselves.
So has this grant been designated for 2019?
It's, it's not, well, it's not guaranteed, I guess, but yeah, it will reapply. Historically, yeah, it's been going on.
It's pretty consistent. Is there around 120-ish?
And nothing, nothing has changed. I haven't been notified or anything.
Thank you.
So there is a program budget when I helped the Friends of the Youth Center apply for the grant, so it's a zero zone.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have the library fund. So since the library is its own separate fund from the city, we do actually show revenues separate within this department, so we'll start there to begin with.
First of all, I mean, sorry to interrupt. I don't know if I'm happy to report, or if I'm sorry to report, but this will be my last budget presentation with you, because I announced my retirement to the library board at their meeting week before last. So yes, this will be my last budget presentation with you, so.
That's not allowed.
It would be a happy time.
Very good.
Yes. And thank you for your service. You've really brought some very interesting programming to the library.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Not till the end of March, though.
Well, then.
Yeah. Well, that was a logical time, because I started work at the end of March, so that'll be eight even full years. And then I'll be done with the annual report for the, to the state, and my successor won't have to worry about that. So, and the budgets won't have started yet, so my successor can, won't have to worry about what I did to the budget for 2020. So that could be all that person's bellywink. So, okay. Thank you.
All right. So if we just start with the revenues here again, Richard helped me, helped me budget most of these line items, with the exception of surplus, which we talked about, so you can see that's, we're jumping that up to about $10,000. The library fund right now has an excess in fund balance, and Richard has decided, and the library board has decided to use some of that for the 2019 budget to basically reduce the impact of the transfer from the general fund. The next line item down is the actual transfer in from the general fund. You can see it sitting at about $593,000 for 2019. It's about a $22,000 jump, but we'll get into the explanations as we move down to the expenditure line items. So I'll touch on a couple of them, and then if you have any specific questions in terms of capital IT, anything like that, I'll have Richard touch on. But the first one I want to jump on here is the health insurance. You can see that's actually decreasing by about $7,600, and that's because the majority of the employees are self plus spouse or single employees. So again, we see that tier implementation coming into play. And then the next one is the salaries. You can see we're decreasing that by about $7,100. I worked with AJ on this one, and she said she's anticipating bringing somebody in for around the same pay grade, same salary amount, but she's anticipating about a two-month gap between Richard's departure and getting somebody in here, so we decrease that a little bit. Whether or not we actually pull somebody in at the same rate as Richard, I'm not sure. I would assume we could get somebody in for a little bit less than that.
I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah. But I, so a decrease just made sense here, either way, if there is a gap, or if we pull somebody in at a lower rate.
We've always had a lot of applicants for our positions that are open, so.
Okay. I'll kind of talk about the next two line items that pop out there, and it's the wages, and it's the wages part-time. We kind of touched on this on the first night as well, too. You can see a pretty fair jump there, about $20,000 in wages, and another $18,000 in the wages part-time. The easy one to explain is the wages part-time. If you look historically where we've been running, 2015 was about $67,000, then we went to $65,000, '17 was at 60, and then for some reason in '18, we knocked it down to $47,000. Not sure why, there wasn't a change in staffing, change in hours, anything like that. So for '19, we budgeted a little bit closer to historical. The line item right above it, the wages, you can see that $20,000 jump. Like I explained the first night, we went through this with a fine-tooth comb. I looked at it multiple times. We sent it over to AJ. She looked at it, couldn't see anything wrong with it. Richard and I walked through it line by line, looked at the hours, looked at the wages, everything, and it just all made sense, and we think it's just an '18 budgeting issue. If you still have any questions on that line item, I ran where we were year-to-date today. So year-to-date today, we're at about $351,000 between, that combines wages and wages part-time. That's through 21 pay periods, so if we prorate that out for 26 pay periods, we end up at about $435,000 for the year. If you put the 3% pay increase on top of that, you end up around $448,000 for the year. So if you combine the two line items, it's about $452,000. So, and there was some shifting in hours and everything within the library budget for '19, and that would make up the gap. So I honestly believe it might have just been a 2018 budgeting issue at this point. Any specific questions for the library fund?
Cap?
So is the city's support of the library, is it $593,000?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
We had a decrease in, excuse me, Dane County funding, but that's beginning to go up again. From what I've learned, when libraries do a major renovation, the people that live outside of the town, like Dane County, typically go to a different library to avoid the construction, and it takes a while for them to come back. And that funding is from three years back, or from two years back. So our funding for 2019 is based on 2017 usage. And so, as you can see, we were at a height of $229,000 in 2016, so 2019 will be back up to $220,000, and the director of the Dane County Library Service and myself expect that the following year, that'll be up another $5,000, and the year after that, we should be up close to $230,000 again. So this is typical of what's happened in libraries in Dane County when they've had a major renovation, so.
Cass, and then Tim.
What knot do you have on today?
Oh, this is the vampire knot. Probably can't see it, but there's got fangs, and it's a seasonal knot. Thank you for asking.
Mayor?
I was just going to ask you, how many people do you anticipate coming through the doors next year?
Ooh, that's a good question. I haven't even thought of that statistic for a while. Well, let's see.
You can get back to me.
I'm going to have to, yeah, I can email you all about the, you know, the number of visitors.
As you said, it was probably down a little bit because of the construction, but now it's going back up.
Yes, yes.
Interesting to see, because I know you track all that.
We do. We track visitors, we attract tenants to our programs, we track checkouts, and the number of books and other items we send to other libraries, the number we get from other libraries. Loads of things, wireless use, computer use.
Could you tell us a little bit about the Sunday hour program?
Oh, yes. Sunday hours, we started, I believe that was the, in the January of 2016, I believe. It's been going well. We've had more and more people coming in. We have a number of programs that we had. We had a nice donation of money for programming, but specifically for programming on Sundays. Most of our donations are for specific things, you know, like they give, somebody gives us $100 for mystery books, or $1,000 for programming, and this donation was specifically for programs on Sunday. And so we're taking advantage of that, and that's bringing in more people also. We have a lot of people that come in to study, and we recently got a, we recently took a survey of our library users. We contracted with Russell Consulting of Madison. They work entirely with libraries, they've been doing that for about 20-some years. And we got the results just this week, and we see a number of people on the survey responding that they wish we were open Sundays all year-round. Well, that's not in our plan at the moment. We're just open with, kind of following the school year, from, you know, September through May. So it's actually going pretty well, and library staff sign up to work certain Sundays, and then we use, we use substitutes, and you notice our cost for Sunday hours has been going down. I suppose we estimated a bit high when we first started that, but as we use more substitutes on Sundays, then the cost goes down. They're paid at a lower rate, and then the regular staff doesn't work as many as those Sundays. The rule is, they all have to work one Sunday, but when we started, a lot of them signed up for more than one Sunday. And so now it's more substitutes. And we always have a regular staff member or a supervisor there too, on Sunday, of course.
Yes.
My question also goes on the Sundays. From what I understood is that that money that was donated for the Sundays to remain open, when that is gone, is the city going to be picking up?
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't money to be open on Sundays.
Okay.
That was a donation to pay for programming on Sundays.
Okay. I would misunderstand.
You know, like we had, we got, coming up, we have a guitar concert for Madison Classical Guitar Society, and we, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay.
We have an author event coming up in a couple of weeks, so. So even without that donation, we'd still be open on Sundays. We just wouldn't have as much going on there. But it's nice to have a busy Sunday, just like we have other days. The last I checked the statistics, Sunday was our, Sundays were our third busiest hours behind Friday afternoons and behind Saturday afternoon. So Friday afternoon was busiest, Saturday afternoon was second busiest, and Sundays were third busiest. So that was interesting to find out.
Matt?
Question about the revenue from fines. $22,000 seems like a lot of fines, for sure, but I guess, how much is that, all the fines expected for the year, and how much is not able to be collected?
Well, it's, it's more than just fines, because it's also lost charges. So fines, you know, you all want to know what fines are, if something's late coming back, but a lot of times, people lose things, and then they pay for them. So that's included in there too. And so we're actually a little, I had budgeted $24,000 for fines this year, based on previous years, but we're actually a little below that now, so we're a little behind in our fine revenue this year. So I cut that back for next year, because it's best not to over-budget on these revenue items. And people, you'd be surprised how many people just gladly pay their fines, because they look at it as supporting the library. And then as far as things that don't come back, we employ a collection agency, oh, I'm sorry, we call it a materials recovery service. They work just with libraries, and that is on the budget list, let's see. I have to look on, it's on, it's called collection services. Let's see, it's line 216, but we don't have the line numbers on here. But we budgeted $500 for that. So which one is that? Jamin, you see where that is on our?
Outside services, maybe?
That would be outside services. The outside services, that's $500, yes. Outside services slash contracts, number two. Well, anyway, so this company charges like seven-something an account, and so we pass, we charge $10. So Tass, for example, if she loses something and doesn't pay, and if it's more than $50, then we send, the computer system automatically sends her name to the, to the materials recovery service, so that saves us the trouble of having to go through all those records and see who owes us a lot of money. If it's more than $50, and then they try to collect by making phone calls and sending letters. And they do a good job of it, too. It's a great return on investment. So either the item comes back, which is what we hope for, or sometimes the money comes back, and that's a big help, too. Sorry, Tass. Didn't think you'd mind.
I think it was last year when we started talking about expanding Sunday hours and whatnot, that there was some concern about the existing employees, that full-time employees that would have to work on Sundays, they weren't necessarily thrilled about that prospect. I'm wondering if you got any pushback, or?
Well, that was, that's always true when you start something new like that, and we were no exception, that, you know, given the choice, if you're hired to work, let's say, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday, and suddenly, oh, we're going to be open Sundays, well, you know, nobody's real enthused about that, and then, you know, we give it a try, and hey, this isn't so bad, and we only have to do it once every several months. We do it from September through the end of the year, people do it once, and then from January through May, people do it once, and they see that I'm there on Sundays, you know, I'm often there like at 11:00 AM on Sundays doing stuff before the place opens, and I'm often there on Sunday afternoons, you know, with these programs. And so then they see, well, we have these substitutes who are helping out, so it's been, it's, and people aren't assigned. People get to volunteer for which Sunday they want to work. So I would say that that's been really well-accepted. You know, I haven't heard any complaints for probably, I don't know, eight or nine months about that, you know. You know, and of course, everybody would rather be home on Sunday or doing something else, but, you know. rather be home on Sunday or doing something, something else, but, you know, but they, they can take time off during the week, then.
The Packers aren't doing that well, so.
Okay, right.
Sid?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on library board as a representative of the city council, and when we have studied this internally and, and gotten some feedback from especially residents who use Sunday hours, it's been a fairly, I would say it's a immensely popular program.
Oh, yes, the residents love it.
And the second, second part of it is that also the, the various special programs we have, and I've attended a few of them, including programs like on Saturday where you have special guests come in, or, or book signings, or, or, or entertainment, actually. That's, those have been also immensely popular and usually fill the, the room. So.
Right.
It's been, it's been a, a positive thing, I think, for the library, both in terms of what services provided, but also some actually advertising or marketing of the library.
It is. Other questions I could answer?
What is the utilities building two? Is there a second building in the library? I'm not familiar with.
Uh, no, actually, the first, the, the larger utilities charge would be electricity, and the smaller one would be gas. And I think water's included in electricity, isn't it, Jamin?
Oh, it's, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So that's what that is. Okay, then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamin.
Thanks, Mitch.
Now what? Now what?
So, moving on, we'll walk through, calling this TIFF, 205, 208, this is TIFF 5 and TIFF 8 right now. We'll be working on the restructure here later in the year. It's, it's gonna be a time-consuming venture, so I, I just basically budgeted TIFF 5 and TIFF 8 together right now, and we'll split it out at a later date. We'll probably bring it back for a budget amendment, but in total, the dollar numbers won't change. It'll just kinda be spread out between the two different TIFF districts, and we'll work through that with Gary Becker from the RDA and Roger Springman, and I'm sure Denise will be involved as well, too, in that restructure. But overall, we'll just kinda walk through some of the line items here. The, the big ones here, we have other state grants in terms of revenue that's about two hundred thousand dollars. That has to do with the idle sites grant that was awarded this year. We'll start incurring some of those costs next year related to the riverfront development, the restoration, the Riverwalk and things like that down in the TIFF district. And then you can see, note proceeds, the TIFF 8 is, is planning on borrowing three hundred thousand dollars for the public, or the Public Works Environmental Testing and Remediation, and then ultimate demolition of those facilities down there as well. So any questions on the revenue side of things for TIFF 5 and TIFF 8? I will note, this will change compared to the final document you get, 'cause I just thought about it when I was sitting here. We have roughly another hundred thousand dollars in additional grant revenue. It's called a SAG grant, that we will actually be getting reimbursed next year, so I will add that to the revenue line item for the final budget as well. But all of those costs will be incurred in 2018, so we'll, we'll get the money in 19. Moving on to the expenses here, you can see we have some administration fees of about ninety-five hundred dollars. Professional services, which would be Gary Becker, and then twenty-five thousand dollars for legal fees for these two TIFF districts. Gary Becker does most of his work through the RDA, but we, we've discussed this and decided, most of the RDA costs that, that, most of the work the RDA is doing, if not all of it, relates to these two TIFF districts. So we're starting to spread those costs back to the TIFF districts to make sure that the city gets reimbursed for them at some point. You can see we have five hundred thousand dollars in TIFF building projects. Again, that's the, the Public Works facility demolition, and then Riverbank design, restoration, Riverwalk work, things like that. Debt issuance fees of ten thousand, that would relate to the three hundred thousand dollars that we're issuing there. And then the transfer to debt services, a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. You can see I have a note there, proposed funding with excess in debt service fund. This is something I just came across the other day as I was digging through a couple of the funds. Our debt service fund actually has some excess money sitting in it. I went through, looked at it, it showed up in 17, didn't need to be there. The reason it happened was 'cause when we did the transfer from the general fund, when we budgeted the transfer from the general fund over to the debt service fund, the assumption was TIFF 7 wouldn't have the money to pay its debt service. TIFF 7 did. The general fund still made the transfer, and TIFF 7 made its transfer to the debt service fund. So now we have enough money sitting in the actual debt service fund itself to cover some of these shortfalls between TIFF 5 and TIFF 6. So, any questions on that? It's a lot of money moving back and forth, but...
Yeah. So for TIFF 8, there are stormwater expenses that are not included here, and there's also fencing expenses. I don't know where you've put those.
Those, I believe, are gonna stay in RDA, at least the stormwater fees.
The stormwater fee is for that property, so, and so is the fencing for that property, too. So it seems like that should all be under TIFF 8.
We can do that. At the end of the day, it'll still be general fund money, but we'll add them to TIFF 8. Okay. Any other questions on TIFF 5 and TIFF 8? And the reason we're showing these is 'cause that's where most of the activity is happening right now, so. Okay. We'll move on to the RDA, then. So again, this may shift a little bit, too. So you can see the RDA, we're just proposing a transfer, seven hundred dollars in from the general fund this year, and then seven thousand and forty for the, and that relates to the stormwater fees. We'll look at the properties and determine where those fees should actually be. Some of them will go to TIFF 5, I imagine some will go to TIFF 8. So we'll shift this out, too. At the end of the day, the RDA may just have a zero budget. So we'll just move these costs over to the TIFF districts, then. Any questions on the RDA?
Just, just one, the attorney, the attorney fees go to our attorney?
No, I don't think, I don't think so. We included those fees in there because we are anticipating that we may have a development agreement with someone, and so Gary Becker told us that we're gonna have to hire an attorney to, you know, work with us on a development agreement. And so that's what the, the attorney's fees were for. I'm not sure if Matt would be working, or if we would be hiring someone else. I just know that, that, that's what the recommendation was, based on kind of the projection of when we were gonna get a developer in.
I don't think that's been determined yet, as far as if we're gonna hire an attorney, if it'll be the same firm or a different firm. The RDA could choose just to hire a Realtor, or find a, a developer that's willing to market the property and save us some of the cost. So I think those are discussions that the RDA will be having between now and next spring, but I think it's safe to say we should anticipate some costs. I think that's why this is in there.
And right now, Matt does, they're not significant, but Matt does do some work related to the TIFF districts as well, too, when, when we pull him in, so.
I ra, I raise it just because it's a, it fairly is substantial money, and if there's gonna be a developer in there and presenting a plan, and whether we need that kind of attorney's fees. But I, I assume that it's just, is it possible that we'll have to have those fees paid?
Yeah. And the intent of this is that the TIFF district will eventually fund all of this, and that's the reason we moved it out of the RDA into the TIFF districts, 'cause then the city will get its money back eventually. Right now, if we continue to fund the RDA and code the costs we have in the past, the RDA has no source of revenue, really. So the city won't get it back, and there's nothing saying that they have to pay it back. It's sitting on the balance sheet as owed to the city right now, but I really don't ever see it coming back, 'cause there's no source of revenue within the RDA. So whatever we can shift to the TIFF districts, we're going to.
Okay.
Regina?
So, along that, that line with the lawyer for RDA, what if, 'cause you have it all like in the riverfront, what if we need some assistance for a marathon site, or if there's something else that comes up within RDA? Right now, it's all in the riverfront? Just because that has the potential of making money, that's why it's all there? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right now, it's there, 'cause that's where we're anticipating most of the costs.
Okay.
If we feel that there's going to be costs either related to Marathon, or, you know, TIFF, I guess not TIFF 4, but the, the RDA, the downtown development area and everything, we can budget them within the, the RDA budget, then.
Okay.
The, the other question is, maybe, maybe those are TIFF 4 eligible costs. So then TIFF 4 would just pay for them. So, you know, which, which would be my assumption that, you know, they're part of that TIFF district, so we could use those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Denise?
Yeah, well, the RDA really didn't talk about costs for anything other than kind of, you know, TIFF 8, the riverfront. So we, you know, we gave no guidance to Jamin or the city on what kind of costs we would be incurring, so.
And, and really, I don't think we need to. Like I said, if there are any costs, most of them would be related to Marathon or something downtown, and TIFF 4 can certainly cover those costs, 'cause it's related to it. And I, I'm, I'm working on an analysis right now for some other costs we may incur related to Marathon, the Marathon site, to get it cleaned up and make it more attractive, so we can just get it sold and start getting some increment there. So there is revenue available there.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more questions? All right. So here's the one you guys can nail on tonight.
Yeah.
All right, so here's the mayor's budget. Pretty straightforward, actually, no big shifts. You can see our health insurance dropped, 'cause we're going down to self-plus-spouse, so that the tier hits us again. Other than that, just really no big shifts in the mayor's budget. Just kinda putting things in line with, with historical perspective, or just in discussions with the mayor in terms of what he, he feels the need for next year. Any questions on the mayor's budget?
Speak now, or forever hold it?
Well, we, we can't, we can't change your salary now.
Good.
No, you, according to state statute, we can't change it until, until the next election for the mayor. But do we have to provide him oxygen? Do we have to provide him oxygen?
We could, we could save my money by cutting the heat from his office.
Yeah.
I did confirm his raise with AJ as well, so. Okay. Yes.
This is got a question.
So I was told that the mayor is required, the mayor and his wife are required to buy the, the outfits for Settlemite. Is that budgeted anywhere, so that they are not having to pay that out of pocket? 'Cause that's pretty significant.
Yeah, it's a, this is a big chunk of change.
And I would like to see some money toward that, if it's required as part of his and her duties, is representing the city. So, and I think, what, what is it, like fifteen hundred dollars or better for the clothes?
It's close to that.
Yeah, for the... Yeah, so.
For the boondog, or whatever the hell that thing is called.
Can you wear Donna's dress from last year? Well, in, in, instead of that, I'd propose maybe two hundred and fifty dollars a year, which would still not even...
That would be close, even.
Yeah, but it would at least contribute.
Is that a motion?
Can you explain, can you explain this? I mean, I don't, I don't understand. What's, what, what outfit are we talking about?
The tradition is, is you purchase a bodog, which we were fortunate enough to be able
to find one, because there's a short window between the election and when Settlemite kicks off. So we scrambled, and we were able to find them, and we just figured it's a part of being the mayor, so I'm not, we're not worried about it.
It's in his salaries budget.
Is it?
I appreciate the thought, but...
How much, can I ask how much?
Lori's bodog was about a thousand bucks.
Holy!
Mine, my outfit was several, a few hundred was all, because I didn't do the knickers, that would've added. So I, I showed restraint and spared everybody that.
Well.
Popped it out of the knickers, took the skirt instead. Nice.
I don't think two hundred and fifty dollars a year would be unreasonable for, that's my opinion.
My concern is that we'd be compensating a city employee...
Her uniform?
And for a substantial amount. I, I would, I would be, I would be better if we, you know, give the, you know, provide some money for the spouse rather than the mayor, but it's just my thought of how we should handle it. I, you know, paying directly to the mayor for this, I think, is a little problematic for me, but...
We, we could look and see what we have in contingency at the end of the year, and if we choose to help reimburse for this costume, then I guess we could do it at that time.
We're not losing any sleep over it, so I wouldn't worry too much about it. We just figure it's part of, part of the deal, and we're happy to be able to represent Stoughton at the events.
Greg?
Yeah, I just want everybody to keep in mind that this is not a city function, even though it is very important to the city. It is a chamber function.
It's an ambassadorship. I, I agree with Denise. I would take it out of contingents, because this is for 2019 budget, and the items have already been bought, and you don't buy new ones every year. So it would have to be within this year's budget, or 2018, to actually pay for it. I don't think you can, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamin, you can't pay for something that's been bought a year prior? Can you reimburse somebody something that's...
I, yeah, I wouldn't think so. I imagine we'll have enough in contingency if, if it's determined that it's allowable. You know, I, I guess that's maybe the bigger question. Matt?
I would think rather than taking something out of contingency and reimbursing this time, we look at in the future, that should more purchases be necessary, we take it out of contingency in that year. So I don't think we have to jump, jump through a lot of hoops, especially since the mayor is saying he's not too concerned about it.
Okay. So, what do you wanna do?
Well, you know, I just, I just think it's the right thing to do, however it's funded, and I would like to say that nobody from the mayor's office planted this seed, or asked me to, you know, to request monies at all. It was something that I had heard through the grapevine, I was curious about. So where do those outfits come from? Do we have, you know, are they available to wear for the weekend? And that's when I was told by someone who's involved with the festival, that no, it is expected that, you know, the mayor and his, his wife, or mayor and spouse will purchase it. So I just, it seemed to me, it's, it represents the city, and I just, it seemed, you know, that it would be fair that the city would support it. So that's, however, that has to happen. If it happens months down the road, we can certainly revisit it. I just thought, it made sense to me.
If you're interested in one, I can, I can get you some connections. They're very established, they're nice.
Thank you. I'm supportive of that, too. I just think, when you said a thousand dollars, I nearly fell out of this chair, but I didn't. But, yow, that's an awful lot of money to, to place the burden upon the mayor, when it's really maybe not required, but it's necessary. So, boy, I, I don't, however it might be done, I'm supportive of Lisa's notion that at least for the mayor's spouse, we should be looking at recompensing that somehow. That's, that's a significant chunk of change, or else we need to raise a salary by about a grand, whichever one works best. I don't know, but that's, I, I'm supportive of that. I, I think that's a good idea, Lisa. I don't know how we do it, but I'm in.
Sydney?
I'm, I'm not in. The, the question is, who owns that outfit? And I, I would say that if it was, if it's the mayor's one thing, and I don't, I don't like that possibility of paying for his, I could see his spouse. But I, I think he's being compensated for something that is, I, I just, I just not sure that it's a good idea for this council to be doing that. And so the question is, who owns it and all that? And I, I would just say, if we can help out the spouse to do that, but I, I'm against paying him directly him directly for it.
If you're worried about the ownership, Sid, you know, he could share it with you.
He could wear his pizza outfit, too.
Get us to buy him a fiddle.
Well, it goes to this thing of, we're, we are not, we're not supposed to be compensated as city, as council people. I mean, if I, if I'm offered something, I decline it if I'm offered something. It's a chamber function, not a city function. I, I would, I can see it different for Lori, but not, not for the mayor.
Hey, Ash, you want to say something?
No, thank you.
Cool. You happy?
Good.
All right.
Well?
Well, it sounds like we table it for this meeting and revisit it down the road.
Well, we can't take action on it anyways. We can put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
That sounds good, I'm good with that.
I'm planning on bringing some amendments, I think, to, I wanted to say the December 11th meeting for the 18 budget. We can analyze the contingency at that point. We're going to have money left in the contingency, so we can maybe discuss it then, if that works.
All right, any other questions for the mayor's budget?
I don't think so. All right, so the last one under the mayor is the commitment to community. The only, the only big shift here is we decrease the, it's under the holiday promotion, it's a decrease of $5,300. What this actually related to, you can see where 2016 is kind of skewing things, and then we just continued to budget that way for some reason. 2016, we, we paid the fair $6,000. I believe it was to stop the pig wrestling.
No, it was for the fireworks.
I don't know if it was fireworks.
We'll pay you not to wrestle those pigs.
I thought it was, I don't know, maybe it was.
Maybe it was fireworks.
It was not for fireworks, it was in compensation for the fact that they did not have the pig wrestling.
That's what I thought it was, yeah.
But we did also did pay fireworks that year.
Yeah, I think that number is...
Fireworks for this was the following year, '17.
Can I make?
Sure.
Thank you, I just have one quick comment, and that is that we had to pay the fair to not wrestle pigs, but doggone it, we can't pay that $1,000 for the mayor's spouse's dress. That's it, just a notatorial comment, thank you.
Denise?
Yes, I would, I would request that we add $1,000 to, and add a line item for the Affordable Transportation Program. I have brochures here, for those of you who are not familiar with it. It is a local transportation program, it's through the Stoughton United Ministries, and of course, they provide transportation for people who can't afford to take taxicabs. And I know that they met with the mayor and requested $5,000, and I'm requesting that if we can find $4,500 more in our budget for landmarks, then I would think we could find $1,000 in our budget for the Affordable Transportation Program. And if you want a brochure, I have them here. I don't know if I should wait until the 13th to make an amendment, or now?
No, we, so today, AJ just informed me that there's an employee that we had originally had marked for a 3% pay increase. Apparently, there was an agreement when this employee made a switch that they agreed to not get a pay increase, so we actually just freed up $1,300 today.
How much?
$1,300.
Well, there you go.
So, there you go.
Sid?
And my spouses, I believe, as of this date, probably the vice president or president or something of that group, so, although I think it's a great idea, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to be voting for it, I have to abstain, of course.
Is it a motion?
Yeah.
Tim?
Anybody?
You can speak to it, can't you?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. I was approached, and they did request $5,000, and like many of the other organizations in town, it's certainly a worthy one. And, you know, the difficulty I'm having with it is, it's not a city-sponsored program, unlike the Arts Council, or the Landmarks, or even the City Band. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm struggling, because there's a lot of other great organizations out there that, you know, potentially will want the same type of treatment going forward. You know, and I do want to support their efforts and, and try to come up with kind of a longer-term plan on how we could help those that have transportation needs. One of the things, you know, of course, we already do is the shared ride taxi. This program here is different, this is serving mostly senior citizens, especially those that need to go to Madison to get health care, and dialysis is a major, a major issue because they can't get that care locally. So, this is one I kind of struggle with, because it is a good cause, and I think it's certainly worthy of discussion, a group discussion, because it does kind of open the door for other organizations to come to us as well.
Is there, is there no way that we can augment what we have with the city already?
What we have is through a state contract that we had to bid out, and I did have one meeting with, with some officials regarding transportation. We actually met at Madison Metro, and if we get too deep into it, it would have to be rebid, and the shared ride taxi, they certainly really wouldn't want to risk losing the business, so they're not really, they're not looking to expand their service area. They have plenty to do in Stoughton the way it is. As a matter of fact, they're getting more requests than were budgeted to begin with, so transportation is a huge challenge for our community.
Tim?
Thank you. I do note that in the brochure, it says that it is sponsored by the City of Stoughton. I don't know what we do at, supported, excuse me, that's even better. What do we do at present to support it? Does somebody know? I mean, if we're not giving them money, what are we doing to support them? Or are they just being generous in their description of what we're doing?
Sid?
What happens is that when somebody needs to get a ride to Madison, if they, if they contact a cab company, it's like a hundred bucks to get to and from Madison. They have a program scheduled, and this is why, set up, because this is why Affordable Transportation started in the first place, because it's a free ride for people who really, really need things like, the mayor was talking about dialysis or health care, or, and, so it fills an incredible need, because we do not have a bus that goes from, from Stoughton to Madison, and it kind of takes, takes the load off. If somebody has to pay a hundred bucks to get to Madison and back again, you know, they can go through places like Start to try to get the money, but our, you know, the Start budget is tight as well. So, having a, having a free service for our residents, I think, is pretty important. And if it's not paid for one way or the other, it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna have to be paid for by somebody, and affordable transportation is exactly that, it's affordable for people because they absolutely need it, and they get the service, otherwise it comes out of some other pot of money from some agency that is helpful in that direction. So, it's a really important program.
Do the, is the funds for reimbursement for mileage, or is it...
Yeah, what they, what they do is they have a list of volunteers, and so the volunteers drive for free, but they're reimbursed for their mileage, so the money they're asking for is due to increases in rides needed, so therefore, they need more money in order to reimburse the mileage for those that drive for them.
Okay. Denise?
And I think there's insurance as well that they, they need to cover for the cost of...
Could be, we didn't really talk about that.
Yeah, and I, and I think we always have to think about the fact that if we, if someone has to pay $100 to get into, into Madison for, you know, a doctor's visit, what is it that they're not going to be able to pay for? And we all have heard the horror stories about, you know, the elderly having to decide between food and their medication. And so, you know, I understand the mayor's struggle, yet, you know, this is kind of a one-shot deal right now, we've got the $1,000 there, and it's certainly something that we desperately need, you know, in this community, is better transportation for our citizens.
Tim?
Thank you. Again, though, it does say that we support it already, in what manner are we supporting it? Do we, do we know? I mean, what are we doing at present?
I don't know if we support them financially. I know we, we, you know, refer people to them, they do some things out of the senior center, so, you know, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's more than moral support, but, you know, we certainly appreciate what they do, and we want it to continue. It's just a question of, they need resources in order to be able to keep up with, with the demand. But currently, I don't know if we give them any financial support, I think we support them more in kind.
Thank you. Again, though, the concern that you have, mayor, is that somehow or another, if we were to support this, it opens the door to have, you say, well, what the heck are you doing there? Give us some money, or I'm not quite certain what, and I'm not, I just not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of organizations in town that would want to come to us and, you know, get the same participation, which we'd love to be able to do, you know, but, you know, the way the, you know, the way we're capped, there's only so much we can do, so, you know, I don't have, you know, a problem, you know, given it, but I just, you know, when they came to me and asked for $5,000, I'm like, whoa, you know, that really kind of, I mean, it shows that there is a huge need, and I just, I didn't really feel there was a way we would be able to do that.
Sid, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Thank you. Is there some way to do something like this via, like calling in to grant, I don't, you know, one-time grant type thing, so we're not necessarily considering a budget, I mean, it's a budgetary item, obviously, we're using funds, but is there another way to couch it in such a way that it doesn't open that door perhaps to...
That's something we talked about, is, you know, is this a one-time deal, or is this a long-term commitment? And it was a little bit uncertain, you know, because for me, you know, ideally, a lot of the services that they need transportation for, and to go to Madison to get, we would rather be able to have them get that locally. And so, one of the things that, you know, I do is, when I'm meeting with Stoughton Hospital, we talk about these types of things, is, you know, to try to get them, you know, and a lot of it has to do with insurance, you know, because that dictates a lot of decisions that people have to make on where they get their care. So, you know, some of that is really out of our control, but we certainly would like to keep as much of that local as we can for many reasons. One, we like the business local, but it would provide a quicker service, and they could do more rides if they were more in Stoughton and less running back and forth to Madison.
Thank you. Greg?
Thank you, Tom. I have to express concern on this, too. I have to agree with the mayor, and I honestly wonder if it's even something that we can do, because these are public funds you're talking about. Can we use public funds in that way, in that manner? I'd like to be able to support this, but I, I, boy, oh, boy, I really have a hard time doing it. And I have a question for Sid, do you know what kind of fundraising they do? Have they, have they talked to the Bryant Center, have they talked to the Walens?
They do requests for grants, and, you know, I guess I can't address exactly what they, what they do, but they do, they have a committee, they have a president, and they have a, they have a vice president, I believe, and treasurer, and part of theirs is to grant writing, but, again, grant writing only goes so far, too. You know, we fund a transportation program, I don't know if there's any, if there's any additional money in that, in our local transportation fund that we could, you know, share that with them. It's a, it's a very legitimate service, because it's for people who really, really have that need, that they can't find those services in our community, just, they don't. Some things the hospital just does not do in Stoughton. And so, I think it's, Denise can address it, too, I think so.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that when I served on the county board, a half of our budget was Health and Human Services, stuff like this. This is, this is completely appropriate for government to fund, because the county was funding it through the federal government, through the state, through our county tax dollars. So, yes, this is, you know, completely appropriate. And we can make it clear that if you just want to do it one-time deal, because we ended up, we found $1,000 in our budget, you know, that's fine. But I think we probably want to figure out, is it something we want to do or not, because the discussion's been going on, I think, for about 15 minutes now.
And Pat, and that'll be the last comment then.
That was going to be my question, was on the fundraising, what they've done so far, and, and we don't have an answer for it.
We have a motion.
I share the mayor's concerns, too, about just opening up more requests, and I don't, I think it's certainly a worthwhile program, and if we can fund it through individual donations, that, that sounds like a better way to go.
I'm going to throw in one thing on this subject, too. Are you guys familiar with the Roundup Program at the utilities, at all? Twice a year, the utility, basically, the Roundup Program is you can sign up to round up your bill to the nearest dollar, and then that goes into a charitable account.
Cool.
Twice a year, they give away a $1,000 grant, so it's just something you can let them know they can apply for as well. I think the first, the next one should be early 19. They try to pick different organizations every single time. Pat and Regina are on the committee, so, you know, they'll have a say in who gets it, just, just so you can let them know that it's out there.
So, Denise's request...
Okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we give, that in our budget, we give $1,000 to Affordable Transportation Program.
I would second.
Any more discussion on that? Lisa?
I don't feel prepared to make a decision, because I just tried to go to the website, and it doesn't exist, and so I don't have enough information at this point, so I'm going to have to say no, because I don't, I don't have enough information, and I also share the concern about, you know, how we might be able to manage this in the future, not that it may be a very reputable and reliable, but I have to, I have to feel informed, so I'm going to have to say no at this point.
Are you, are you asking to table until, until the November, the December?
I would like to see it table.
Yeah, I would also.
That's a motion to table? Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Can we have the person come in?
That's it.
Can we have the head of this come in?
If we table, we can do all sorts of things like that. Motion is not amendable. Simple majority.
All in favor of tabling?
To when? To when?
The motion will be tabled until...
Until when?
December 13th.
Next meeting?
13th?
Okay.
December, I apologize.
Or November.
November 13th, excuse me.
November 13th, thank you.
Can I address the president? I have to abstain from this, so.
No problem.
There's one abstention.
You don't have to.
I do.
But you can.
It's just a recommendation to council, it's not actually voting on the measure.
I don't need it. I think it's a no-brainer.
All right, so there was a, there was a question that, could the person who is in charge of this program talk to the council before the council, I think would be a really wise idea, so that we can get a little more information, better understanding.
Invite them to the November 13th meeting? Invite them to the November thirteenth meeting?
So, we'll put that in the budget and the general. All right. And with that, is there any other items that we're discussing?
I.
Well, he said all of her eyes, he didn't ask for the names.
There were no names.
There were no names?
One abstention.
Okay.
How many names? I didn't. I moved to approve the budget.
We haven't gone through the changes yet.
This is, this is committee a whole.
Okay, so we have to do the whole other stuff?
That'll be at the thirteenth meeting, where we actually approve.
Yeah. We still got a few items to go through.
Okay.
Make a motion then?
I withdraw my motion.
There's no motion yet. So, Jean, next.
Okay, so, I'll just go through real quick. Any budget changes, recommendations, summarize what we did here the last three meetings. I have a couple, couple to-dos that'll go in the final document. Overall, these meetings were set up to just not have any surprises on the thirteenth, so the thirteenth, the mayor will present the overall total budget, and you guys will vote to approve it or not. So, that was the intent of these meetings. But, with that said, we'll kind of walk through these changes real quick. So, revisions I made, we did, we did decide to reduce the 2019 CIP by the fifteen thousand dollars for the community-wide survey. We decided this would be funded through the contingency fund. Again, we shifted the fifty-nine thousand dollars in costs from the RDA to TIF V, to F eight, more accurately reflects the nature of the work the RDA is doing. Funds available for use in 2019 right now, we have TIF number three with about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars sitting out there. We can certainly decide what we're going to do that for, if we need to use that in nineteen, if anything unexpected comes along, or continue to push it back to 2020. Special assessments, we have a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. My recommendation would be to use this to reduce the future debt issues, and this will kind of work its way out come January, February, when we start down the borrowing process to really determine what we, we need to borrow. I mentioned earlier, the debt service fund does have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars excess in there. My recommendation would be to pay the 2019 TIF V slash eight and TIF six debt service requirements, so then we're not, so, for all intents and purposes, the general fund won't be cash flowing those for 2019.
Pat?
A question on the community-wide survey. The CIP, that's going to pay for that, is that the 2019 CIP or the 2018?
It was originally in.
I'm sorry, not CIP, but contingency.
That's already slated for the nineteen contingency.
I think we, we said it was going to come from undesignated fund.
We can do that, too. I mean, we, we can code it to the mayor's budget and let it run through the, the fund balance that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I have a question, then, on the shift from the RDA to the TIF V eight. So, does that mean, then, that we have more money in the general fund? Because that money was originally in, taken out of general fund?
No, because I'm showing the transfer to the TIF right now, because the, the TIF won't have any, TIF eight will not have any cash to fund operations next year.
Okay, so then, what about the hundred and seventy-one thousand? Can we not use that, along with part of the debt service, to pay for the outstanding debt from TID V eight and six?
The, so, the amount in the debt service fund that's in excess, that will be enough to cover the TIF V eight and six nineteen debt service cost. So, that, that should be enough to cover what's left in the debt service fund. So, the, the amount owed to the general fund from TIF three, it's, it's there to use, really.
But do we want to delete the whole debt service fund? I guess that, don't we want to leave some monies in there?
Not necessarily, because we just fund that on an annual basis, anyway. We, we could certainly contribute it to the debt service fund and try to smooth out the impact of debt service over the years. In the scheme of a, what's, what's our, three million dollars, three point one million dollars, and in the scheme of smoothing things out over the years, it's not a huge impact. We could certainly move it to debt service fund and use that to reduce next year's levy if we, or the, the 2020 levy, or even the 2019 levy, if we wanted to.
So, what are you recommending the hundred and seventy-one thousand be used for?
I'm not recommending it for anything. We have it, and that, that can be discussions that you folks have. Unfortunately, in terms of talking about funding physicians and things like that, it's not a sustainable source, it's just there. And it's certain, some, it's something we could certainly use in the future to amend the budget if something comes up, but as of right now, that money is not slated for anything at this point.
Okay, well, I have an idea, so.
Okay. Yeah, it was originally, I had originally slated it to cover the TIF V eight, six debt service. Right now, well, actually, I should back up. I originally had it slated to cover engineering costs in eighteen for the nineteen projects. We found that in the special assessments. And then I said, okay, well, this can pay the TIF V eight, six debt service. And then I said, oh, wow, we have excess funds in the, the debt service fund. So, it kind of freed it up in the last week or so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll save my recommendation until your last page, where you come up with stuff?
Okay. All right, so, some other things we talked about, divert funding from Building Maintenance Reserve Fund to the general fund. So, we did, this is actually, the quotes are the policy itself, the Building Maintenance Reserve Fund is not available for expenditure for any other purpose than is laid out in this policy. The city shall commit its revenue received from the rental of city properties to the Building Maintenance Fund. The 2012 funding limit was set at the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The way I interpret this is the minimum funding required every year is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars to the Building Maintenance Reserve Fund. We have been averaging roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand per year actual in rental income. So, I just went back a few years, we've had forty-eight thousand dollars in excess funding from that. So, my recommendations in the near term, fund the 2019 utilities costs associated with the McFarland State Bank building from the excess funding in this fund, which would be about thirteen thousand dollars of it. Looking forward, the finance committee and council can determine what to do with that excess rental revenue, if it should go into the, the Building Maintenance Fund, or if we can move it to the general fund operating budget. And I think that's a decision we can make further down the road in the 2020 budgeting process. Any questions on that? It, it'd also be a decision you make, do you just want to change the policy to say all rental income goes to the Building Maintenance Reserve Fund, or do you want to leave that funding level at the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars? I'll tell you right now, the Building Maintenance Reserve Fund is pretty healthy, but it's also there to cover big, big costs in case we incur them. So, it's something to think about, and it's something I'll put on a future finance committee agenda to talk about. Any questions on that one? There's a lot of words.
The Building Maintenance Fund, I'm just curious that there's a building that we own, a historic building that really needs some repair, which is the, the powerhouse, so some of that funding could go to repair some of that building?
So, we'll jump down to the next bullet point. So, we were going to consider funding for the six thousand dollar dam inspection costs, and then below it is the bullet point where it's listing the, the buildings we can use this on. And you can see the powerhouse starts with the third line down. So, it is applicable. I would have to go back and really look at the types of costs the policy says we can use it for. There's, there's a, there are some thresholds built in, in terms of what can be used out of this fund versus what strictly has to go to the CIP budget, so that would be additional discussion to be had. But there may be some things that this could actually be used for, for the powerhouse. We just have to read the policy again.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the big issue is the right sizing plan. Obviously, there, there's just not much we can do with it right now, because we're trying to figure out what kind of sustainable source of revenues we can find. These are just a couple of things on my to-do list to look at, kind of, in the next quarter, next two quarters, things like that, just to keep this moving in on people's minds. First thing, obviously, I have to look at the, how this impacts our expenditure restraint program. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, we do get some state funding through the expenditure restraint program. It's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year, roughly, for us. We're only allowed to grow our general fund budget by a certain percentage every single year, so I have to kind of look and see what this would do to our general fund budget. If it would blow it up too much, we would run the risk of losing that funding, so then when we talk about going to referendum to increase the levy, not only for that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we, we potentially would have to look to see if we had to cover that lost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue, too. So, I'm not worried about it, it's just something I want to make sure we do right, because there are some nuances to that program that we need to look at. And I'm actually kind of in discussions with some folks from DeForest, with Baker Tilly, I've reached out to the Department of Revenue just to say, you know, how can we make this work without screwing up this, this program for us? Because you're jumping from, you know, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars all of a sudden to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in terms of increasing the levy, just to make this work. So, that's the first thing I need to look at. The other thing, you know, we can look at the TIF three amounts due to the general fund. Unfortunately, it's not a sustainable amount of revenue. The third bullet point, I put this in before I actually researched the policy, so it's kind of, we do have some options with the excess funding there, but not enough to really help out with the right sizing. Again, I'll look at the ending 2018 fund balance to determine the amounts available there, see how well we did this year. It, it's hard to estimate at this point in time. Through the TIF V and eight restructure, I'm going to look at the increment in expenses to determine how much debt service the general fund may need to cash flow in the future. We're just not sure about that right now, we'll have to see how this, this restructure works out. We can forecast TIF number three funds available upon its closing. Unfortunately, I did the math with the tricky little calculation that they gave us, confirmed it with the DOR. If we were to close TIF three today, essentially, it would end up in additional, I think, sixty-seven thousand dollars to our, our base levy, so.
Which actually is different than what we were able to do in the past, which we could not increase our levy. Now, they changed it so that we, we can now increase the levy by sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Yep, it's just not quite as large as we had initially anticipated. We, we thought we could just take the total funds we're getting right now related to the city mill rate, which is closer to the two hundred-plus-thousand range. Of course, the state throws in a funky little formula that allows you to get less once you close that. There will be a bit of a windfall when we do close TIF three, but we have to share that with the other taxing jurisdictions, jurisdictions, too. And again, none of this will really happen until the 2021 budget year. So, we're struggling with kind of that, you know, we have funds available in nineteen through the TIF three amounts that are owed, but we don't close it until 2020, which won't impact us until the 2021 budget year. So, it's like we have this 2020 gap of funding right now, which is kind of what all these steps will go through. Again, we'll look at the increase of the level levy through the referendum, whatever we can't fill. Again, I, I can't make any promises, this is just what's on my to-do list to do. And then we'll explore some TIF increment sharing beginning in nineteen to potentially limit the amounts that need to be advanced to TIF V and eight from the general fund to cover debt service until we see some increment there. So, lots to do, lots of moving parts. I imagine more will be added to this, but I just wanted you to know I'm not losing sight of it, and keep working on it, and do what we can. So, any questions on this one?
Nice.
Okay, so, what I had suggested was that we transfer from our undesignated fund three hundred thousand dollars, because we have over twenty-five percent in our undesignated fund, and we are to have, according to policy, between twenty and twenty-five percent. So, if we were to transfer that amount of money to the equipment replacement fund, then what we could do for the next three years is we could reduce our transfer in from the general fund by fifty thousand dollars, and that is sustainable, because each year we would then be able to cover our costs and actually end up in a better place by 2021. We would end up, rather than with seventy-two thousand dollars in the fund, we would end up with two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the fund. So, and then in 2021, we have sixty-seven thousand dollars, which we can then add to the levy from the closing out of TID three. So, I believe that we do have at least fifty thousand dollars that is sustainable, that we could be using towards either the wage scale, or maybe we want to look at funding a few of the part-time requests, because if you guys are talking to department heads, you know that they are putting in mucho hours, okay? You know, Dan from Parks and Rec are telling us that he's working fifty-five and sixty hours a week. So, you know, we may want to take a look at that. And I put before you that we've got the money there, you know, and it will be sustainable. And of course, the other thing that we should be looking at is the business plan for the Opera House. I know that I raised it last time, and I'm going to raise it again. If we ask the Opera House to put together a five-year business plan and show us how they are going to become less dependent on us, that then gives us more money into the general fund. But of course, I think that we need to make sure we give that directive and ask them to come to us with a business plan in 2020 during the budget.
That's a proposal that you, you should go to the committee?
CACP. And I will be giving the chair a resolution that I put together for that. But I'm just telling the, I'm just telling the council that there are options out there for us, that we could be looking seriously at putting this money towards, you know, a little bit towards the wage scale, or looking at maybe some part-time help to help, you know, our staff.
And I agree, there, there's a lot to look at. I don't think this is something we're going to be able to make a decision on before the nineteen budget is actually passed. If it comes down to a point where we find out we can make this happen, and all the analysis is done, I mean, you can see all the moving parts here. I don't want to make the bad, the wrong decision and say, you know what, we missed something. The expenditure restraint program, which I kind of learned about two days ago. Things kind of keep popping up, and that's why I'm starting to make this bullet point list. The other side of it, too, is I don't, there is no partial implementation plan set up right now either for that, so we would need to work with the, the committee that has been set up with Brett and Cindy and AJ to work through that as well. So, again, I don't, I, I just, I don't see this as being something we hash out before the thirteenth when we approve this budget. I see this more of a work in progress that we may need to bring back at some point in nineteen to say, you know what, we, we can do this partially. How do you guys feel about amending the budget, moving forward with it?
Yes?
I have a comment. I'm in the finance committee, and Denise brought this up about taking money from here, and then we'll be okay and stuff. I don't understand it, and I'll be clear on it. So, if you guys want to go ahead with it, I just don't understand how we can have a couple hundred thousand sitting here and not being able to not have touched it before. So, I need more clarity on what is going on, on that. It doesn't have to be tonight, I don't want it to be tonight, but.
It's just, it's the fund balance that's been built up over time. In business terms, it's your retained earnings amount that's.
Of, of TIF three, or of what?
Nope, that's general fund, actually. It's general fund.
It's essentially our savings account, and anything that's left over goes into the savings account, and it's been building up over the years. It's an account that we take our contingency fund, fund from, but it's probably also the account that has been paying, you know, some of the deficits over the years, too. So, you know, we've got a healthy, you know, undesignated fund there, and we should be using it in these next couple of years to help kind of bridge until the TID closes, TID three closes, and until we can get a business plan for the Opera TID 3 closes, and until we can get a business plan for the Opera House and ask them to start reducing their dependence on the city. You know, we have to look for these ways of finding general fund to, to start to fund these things.
I'm not, I'm in disagreement that, that the Opera House is that much of a burden on the city. We're, we're paying for a service like the library and everything, we're paying employees. What the Opera House brings into this community, I, I think it's well worth what we put into it, so I don't want to hold them to the line on.
The Opera House has the ability to charge for various things. That's why you do a business plan. They have the ability to have, if, if, if they have space, and that's what I keep hearing, we're going to give them more space, they can sell water, or soda, or maybe beer, or something. So they can, they can, you know, cover more of their charges, more of their cost. They have that ability, where, you know, other, you know, departments don't necessarily have those same kinds of abilities.
And I don't mean to drag this on and on, but part of their fees is their, their wages that we're looking at. We don't make the library board, or the police, or something come up to show a budget thing for them to pay for their wages for a service that they're giving us.
Regina.
Oh, I, I think what, I think you're both correct. I think what Denise is asking is that the Opera House, now that we have the McFarland State Bank, and the City Hall possibly moving there, has a great opportunity to expand and to increase their revenue. She's just asking them to visualize what that's going to be and how that could impact the future of the Opera House. And therefore, we can, you know, benefit, the whole community can benefit from them. And with the increased sales in, if they have a gift shop, or a lounge area, or meet and greet, she's just trying to make them think about all the possibilities, and so we can start implementing them and start making that vision come true, because next year, they, if City Hall does move into McFarland, then they might put in a proposal to develop a gift shop, or develop a lounge area, develop, bring bathrooms up. She's just trying to get them to jumpstart this vision. And so it's a benefit for everybody, so we don't have to wait. And then, once that vision is, I think, why we went with the McFarland State Bank, we're, we're anticipating their revenue to go up, and so that it would be more, for better term, a cash cow for the city as opposed to the city paying them. That's all. And so it's another, like you said, you know, recreation brings in revenue and everything, it's just a matter of getting them to start visualizing what we, in this council, had envisioned when we made that deal with McFarland State Bank. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, but that's what I envisioned, what you were trying to do.
All right.
I just want to thank Jamin and those that worked on the budget, because to me, it was much clearer, I have a better understanding after every meeting of what's going on. It was just provided a lot of clarity that I didn't feel like I had last year, so for those of you that have been involved in that, and Jamin, all your reporting, thank you.
It was, yeah, I appreciate that. It was all leadership, I mean, they were, they were vested in this one, and we met one-on-one with every single one of them and worked through it, so they were really responsive, answered all my questions, and, you know, we figured it out. One last thing I'm going to tell you guys, I got our final statement of assessment today, so the first presentation I gave with what I thought the tax rate was going to be, I'll give you the, the bad news first. My estimated assessed value assumption was $371,000 higher than actual. Good news is, is that's a difference of .03%, and the rate doesn't change, so we are actually seeing a $7 decrease per $1,000 assessed value, so. So continues the, the trend of decreasing rates.
Okay, so we'll present this on the 13th, and.
So I have one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second!
Call in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.